Hi, and welcome to another edition of the Board Wrap-Up Show for the month of September 2011. As the Ponca City school year is now underway, a month in, Board of Education met recently, and we're going to talk with Superintendent Pennington about the Board of Education meeting, anything else he would like to communicate to his constituents in Ponca City. And I thought one of the things that was really interesting is that the subject of a performing arts center, theater, is now moving back in. What can you tell us about that?
Well, last fall, we put together a long-range planning committee. Last one we did was five years ago. And we went through every building in the district and looked at the needs that we have. You know, our buildings are old buildings. And in fact, if people have been down Grand Avenue, they see that we're doing some work on West. West is 50 years old this year. And it is, if you look at it, it's one of the newer buildings that we have. So we're always having to do things to our facilities. And occasionally, we construct new facilities. Garfield Elementary is an example, a new facility we've constructed. But the long-range planning committee met, and they went through all our buildings and kind of peeked behind the curtain, so to speak, and came up with a list of recommendations. And when you look at the secondary schools, the number-one recommendation by the committee is that we should build a performing arts center. And so last night, because the performing arts center is such an expensive project, it will take, we'll probably have to put maybe two, or maybe even parts of three bond issues together to be able to afford to do that. And because of the changes that it potentially makes on the high school campus, we felt like it was time to get that before the Board, give them a chance to hear some cost figures, give them a chance to look at possible locations, and then give us guidance as to whether or not they wanted us to go forward and continue to look at that, or whether or not they think that we should put that off for a while and go on to some other projects. And you know, those gymnasiums, performing arts centers, athletic facilities, I would say, and performing arts centers are things that sometimes are difficult for the public to get their hands around about why we need to do something like that. I think that, you know, from my perspective, and this is one opinion of a citizen of Ponca City, and I've said this before, one of the things that really surprised me when I came to this school district was that we did not have a first-class performing arts center. I was just surprised. I mean, I just, you know, my opinion of the Ponca City Public Schools, as someone who went to high school in Tulsa, and we came and played Ponca City, someone who, when I was coaching, when I first started coaching in the early, in the mid-'70s, actually came to Ponca City at one of the first games played at Robinson Fieldhouse to scout a basketball game, and that was such a, I know I'd played in the old facility, and to come back a few years later and play in that new facility was just assumed that Ponca City had great facilities. When I came to Blackwell, we had junior high athletic events that we played at East Middle School and saw the renovation of that facility and what they did with that building, but never looked at the performance venues. And so I was just really surprised, the quality that we didn't have, what most, especially in large high schools, what most students experience today. And what that is, is that's a performing arts center auditorium where the classrooms for the band, orchestra, vocal music are all attached to that building. And when students need to practice on the stage, they have a very short walk from the classroom to the stage to set up, to prepare for that performance, to practice and to do those kinds of things. So I was surprised by that. And in fact, and I've told a lot of people this, and a lot of people have trouble believing, but with the best, with the exception of what now that Northern has built the Renfro Center, the best performing arts center venue in K County is in the Blackwell Public Schools. And they have a 999-seat auditorium that was built in, I think they opened it in 1969 or 1970. And it just, you know, it's just something I found surprising. Of course, even since then, what schools have built in the last 10 years across our state has really even made the playing field for our kids even more unlevel. Not only is it the facility that they perform in, but what's been done in those practice rooms and the bringing of technology into practice rooms and how you can use computers to record music and to record scores and to learn how to compose and those kinds of things. I mean, it's like, just as computers revolutionize our lives, it's definitely revolutionized the music industry. And you know, our students who do orchestra and choir and do bands, some of those students will go on to college in those areas, some of those kids will go on to musical careers. So our students really have a deficit when it comes to what's available today in a late 20th century, even a newer 21st century facility. So I think that's something we've got to have a discussion about. We may decide not to do that, and that's fine. You know, I mean, obviously, the Board is going to listen to the public, but I think we have to have the conversation, and we have to look at that. You know, I had an opportunity last spring, our orchestra was selected to play in Tulsa for the Oklahoma Music Directors Association. And they actually played at the same time the orchestra from Oklahoma State played. The orchestra from Oklahoma State played first, and then our kids played. And I'm not a music, nobody would accuse me of being a music critic or having a lot of knowledge about music. But I know what I heard, and our orchestra was every bit as good, or in my opinion, even better than the orchestra at Oklahoma State. Now, but, and I go to, you know, I don't go to every orchestra performance. I make, I'll make one a year, maybe sometimes two. But what I heard that day in Tulsa, there's no comparison to what I hear when they play at the Howe Auditorium. The music, that, the acoustics in the Howe Auditorium don't allow you to experience the performance of our students the way it should be experienced. I think we need to correct that. We did a study of the Howe Auditorium five, six, seven years ago, and you know, we basically asked two questions. First of all, one thing that happens to us when we perform at the Howe Auditorium is our orchestra cannot set up the way it should be, our stage is not big enough. And our orchestra is getting bigger, but our stage is not big enough for them to set up in such a way so that they're, so they can perform to their fullest capacity. So we have a stage issue in the Howe Auditorium. We have an acoustical issue. The Howe Auditorium is a 1920 vaudeville stage, and that's what it is. And in 1920, that was a great facility. But you know, in eight years, it's going to be 2020. And we haven't, and we've done some things, we've put some acoustical panels up, we've done some things with the sound system, but it still is a vaudeville, that's what it is. And so we asked two questions. Can we renovate this facility to turn it into, make the stage big enough or orchestra can set up? Can we approve the acoustics so that our orchestra, or band, or vocalist could record music that we could then send out for national contests at the quality we need to do that? And the answer was no. We can put new seats in that facility, we can put new lights in, we can put, you know, new mics. But the two primary things, in my opinion, that we ought to be able to do in our facility, we can't do. And so that's why I believe we need to build a new performing arts center. Now, so if you're going to build one, where are you going to put it? Many of our viewers may remember that a few years ago, we entered into a discussion and developed a plan with the city to build a performing arts center and a community center where the Hutchins Memorial sits. And the voters, in two separate occasions, said no to that. First, they said no to the city when they wanted to build a conference center, then a couple of months later, we actually had a bond election with the performing arts center as a part of that bond election. And we lost that bond election primarily because people were concerned that if that bond election passed, that the city would use that as an excuse to tear down the Hutchins Memorial. So as a result of that, we believed, we got a very clear message that said, "We want Hutchins off the table." And so we proceeded to try to figure out, how can we, how can we build a performing arts center? Where can we put one? That's when, that's when we started, we realized that we didn't, you know, we needed space. And so as a result of that, we started to acquire property north of the high school. And we have acquired almost all of that entire two blocks, or a couple pieces of property left. And we think that someday in the future, whether that's five years from now, or 10 years from now, or two years from now, we will acquire that property. So we've started to do that, just to give us options. And so last night, we had a chance to look at what some of those options might be. One of the first things that we discussed was, you know, what do we want? What do we want? Well, we want a facility that is, you know, is first-class. We want something that fits in with the high school. We have a very beautiful high school campus. I think that you don't have to be an architectural expert to realize that we have a beautiful facility at the high school. The original Howe Building is a beautiful building, and we've been careful over time as we've expanded that facility, as we've made additions, we've maintained the architectural integrity of that facility. And we don't want to disturb that, if at all possible. We would like to build a space that kids have access to during the day. And we would like to build a space that not only is a performing arts center, but also is a, has classroom space. So we looked at some different locations. The first location we looked at was, you know, well, what if we tear down the existing practice area and build an auditorium there? And we could do that, but it's a massive structure, and it would block the view of the high school. It would completely change the aesthetics of that, of the corner of Overbrook and Fifth, and we don't, we don't want to do that. We looked at, what if we put the performing arts center on the property that we've purchased? Again, we have space, we would eventually have space to do that. We could orient it toward Fifth Street, we could orient it towards Seventh Street, we'd have a couple of options there. And we kind of like that location. The issue is that if you build that center there, and if you build practice rooms there, then you have the issue of students getting back and forth to class. And we have, we use, we have practice going on in the Fine Arts Building just about every hour of the day. And so we would have students walking from the high school either down Seventh or down Fifth Street and back to the practice facility. Now, can we do that? Sure. There are big campuses all across, if you would, if you go to high schools in California, they've adopted a campus model where they'll have a science building, they'll have a math building, and kids walk throughout that all the time. But they don't deal with the weather we deal with. And when you do that, you either, at the Fine Arts Building, you would have to let students out a little bit early so they could get to their next class on time, and kids are probably going to be to you a little bit late, unless you were to alternate your entire bell schedule, which means you'd have students at the high school load, you know, hanging around when they, you know, we like to have small time passing periods so kids get to where they need to be and they're not out goofing around in the hallways. So that's a negative. What we like, if our viewers, and I'm sure that last night's board meeting will, has already, will air on Channel 19, and you'll be able to see this presentation, but we looked at, what if we put that auditorium in the space between the high school and Robinson Fieldhouse? You can either turn it to face Seventh Street, or you can turn it to face Fifth. And that's the location that we like.
You're talking about parking lot or baseball field?
Both.
Both.
We kind of set in that, in both areas. If we, if we just build the performing arts center and face it towards Seventh Street, we don't touch the baseball field. But if, but if we do a, if we build the classroom space on, then we have to take the baseball field, which lends us to the question, is where's the baseball field? Well, the plan we saw last night, and I think it was the plan that the architects recommended, and I think it's the plan that the Board likes right now, would the area north of the football stadium, we would relocate the baseball field to that location and eventually bring our softball field over. What we like about that is that means that all high school activities, with the exception of golf and swimming, could take place on the high school campus. Or very close, you know, we use the tennis courts at the park, but we would have everything right there on the high school campus. You know, we think that's a great scenario for us. Again, if you were, if you were going to build, if we were starting over and we were building a brand-new high school complex, we would put everything in one location. We, and you know, we just think that's a great fit. Again, when we take the baseball field, it gives us additional parking so that we saw, so that we, so that we have parking not only for the performing arts center, but for other activities. Again, that parking would be close to the performing arts center, close to Robinson Fieldhouse, close to the football field, and really close to the baseball stadium, baseball and softball complex. So we think that's a win-win. It's expensive, it's not cheap to do. You're probably looking somewhere in the neighborhood of $30 million to build a performing arts center, the practice spaces, and to relocate those ball fields. And that's why the Board has a, has a big decision to make. The performing arts center, standalone performing arts center is somewhere between $16 and $22 The additional classroom space, again, $4 to $6 million. So again, it's not cheap, but if you think about it in terms of that, that this is, you know, a 100-year commitment, you know, if you look at it in that time, that time period, it's not that big of a, not that big of a cost, you know. And again, we have to think those, we have to think that way. I mean, we are, you know, again, I don't know that the people that built the Howe, that built the original high school sat down to themselves and said, gee, 100 years later, we're still going to use this building. But we do, and I think we'll use it. I mean, I can't imagine a situation that we're not in the Howe Auditorium. And again, you know, we're a new state, we don't have a lot of history, but it's not uncommon to go back on the East Coast. You've got buildings that are 200, 250 years old that schools have used and will continue to use, and they continue to, so I mean, it's not far-fetched to say that this auditorium will still be in use, if we build one, that this performing arts center that we build will still be in use 100 years from now.
Is it too early to talk about where you go from here? Because I'm sure there's discussion, what's a timetable, how soon do they want to make a decision? And then, and then you've got, obviously, a bond issue that you're going to have to present. Do you have any of that information?
No, not really. We talked about, a little bit about that last night. We'll have a greater discussion in the October meeting. I think the first thing that has to happen, that the Board needs to go see some facilities. They need to get in their mind a picture, I mean, you know, you can draw it out, but they need to, they need to see what a new, relatively new performing arts center looks like, and exactly how dramatically that is, different that is than what we have right now. When we put the original plan together to work with the city, we basically modeled that after a performing arts center that the Bardsville Public Schools had built. And then this, when the, when the committee did their tours, they actually went to Stillwater to look at their performing arts center. So we've got some performing arts centers we can look at that are quality facilities that are close by, that I think can, can give us a, paint us a pretty good picture of what we'd like to have. What I, I mean, I just, and I think that, again, we need, in my opinion, that's, you know, if you look at our, if you look at what we offer facility-wise in this district, we have a beautiful basketball wrestling facility, and we've just made it better. And we still need to do some things. I mean, we're not where we want to be yet, but it's, but it's a nice facility. Our football stadium, do we need some work on our football stadium? Yes, we do. Okay? I mean, it's, we could use a new press box, we need to do some renovation of our entrance areas, probably do some work on seating, but, but again, we have a quality football stadium. Our baseball field's a nice facility. Our softball field is a nice, we continue to work on, it's a nice facility. Where our facilities are at the bottom of 6A, and I'm not going to say they're the worst facilities in 6A, but we're pretty close to that, is our performance venue. And this is not a community that's been, that's been last in very many things. And then we have, and what amazes me, and it was the thing that surprised me when I came to Ponca City, was we have great pride in our performing arts. You know, and that's, that's a pride, and that's not, and it's been that way forever. And I'm just really surprised that this community has never tackled this issue. And so this is a chance for us to do that, and hopefully, you know, we'll have a discussion and, but I, you know, I would like to think that we would probably bring a bond package to our patrons in the spring of 2012, at the latest, the fall of 2012.
Six to 12 months, so, very good. Another issue that was brought up at the board meeting was, and I'm not a computer person, I apologize for that, but it is Facebook. I know that there are some things you would probably like your parents and your students to know about, the use of Facebook and how it affects the students and the teachers and the parameters that you have in our school system.
You know, we're, we talk a lot about the fact that education never changes, but it changes all the time. And just like the rest of American society, we're trying to figure out, how does social media fit with what we do? And so last night, the Board saw two proposed policies that are in the area of social media. And particularly, we're talking about texting and Facebook. You know, we want our teachers to have relationships with our students, but those need to be professional And so what this policy does, it establishes some guidelines for social media interaction. If adopted, basically, what it says is, I mean, things we've been telling our staff for years, use common sense. You don't want to have students on your Facebook page, you don't want to friend them, they shouldn't be able to look and see what you have on Facebook. You shouldn't be posting things about students on Facebook. You, you know, can you text message somebody? Somebody text message you and say, you know, "Mr. Turney, what page is the math assignment on tonight?" Yeah, I mean, that's fine. But you don't need to engage in a, in a text message conversation where you discuss all the things that people discuss in text messaging. So, and that's kind of in general what we're, what we're talking about. You know, we, what in the past have been suggestions for faculty will now be, will now be policy. You know, my personal preference would be is that teachers limit their interaction with students to district websites. We, each of our teachers have the ability to create a website that is a school website, where they post assignments, where they post homework, where students and parents can go look and see what's going on in class. And that's where the interaction needs to be. If you go to, you know, when our students go to college, that's how they'll interact with their, with their professors. They'll interact on webpages, that's where, that's where they'll ask questions. And so our kids need to get used to that. And that's where our teachers need to limit their interaction to.
You mentioned swimming a while ago, and I know there's an agreement between our schools and our beautiful new YMCA. A lot of people, though I think, need to know that the school system, they pay, and they pay a pretty good price for our kids to be able to use our local YMCA, especially for our swim meets and things like that.
You know, we have an agreement with the Y that sets times when we will be able to practice and when we'll be able to have meets. And then also some times that we can take students from our schools over to do some various activities. But the primary thing that we'll use the Y for is swim practice and swim meets. And we're glad to have it. For the last several years, our students have had to travel to Tonka Waa, or they've used the Conoco facility. And we pay the Y $15,000 a year for the access to the facility that we have. Now, that's a lot of money, but it's a lot less expensive than building our own swimming And we think it's a good investment and a good example of community, school, district partnership.
It's an excellent facility, too. People come in here now, and they eyebrows raised. Other things, I guess we've gotten off to a good start on the school year. Anything else that you, you wanted to talk to people?
Yeah, Phil, we've had a great start. In fact, this may be, in fact, it was funny, we've been talking among ourselves that this may be one of the best starts we've ever had, and kind of wondering, when is the first real crisis going to hit? You know, kind of, knock on wood, we haven't had that yet. What I would like to take a little time today is just let our community know. You know, I think most people in Ponca City know who Charlie Holler is. Charlie is a former member of our Board of Education and is the founder of Great Expectations, which is an educational program that he founded specifically originally to work with children who come from families in poverty, but has spread to schools, not only in Oklahoma, but across our nation, that, from kids from all socioeconomic walks of life. Found out a couple of weeks ago that Charlie has a rare form of cancer and is undergoing treatment right now in, out of state. And he goes, he's back and forth, and he's, he's, he's out of state for treatment, then he comes home. I think it's pretty common for us to not always recognize greatness when it's close And sometimes, somebody who does important things is not recognized in their home for the important things they do. Charlie Holler's a great man. His vision, you know, a lot of people complain about schools, and they complain about the education system. Charlie worked to make things better. We wish him well as he undergoes cancer treatment. I know Charlie has a lot of work left to do. They're involved, Great Expectations is involved in a huge project in Oklahoma City. What I know about the people I know that have dealt with cancer is that probably the most important thing is your attitude. And Charlie Holler has a great attitude and is one of those people that enjoys life and loves life and is, and you know, is a fighter. And so I just want to, you know, say, Charlie, I hope you get well. And I would encourage those in our community that know Charlie, if you haven't yet, send him a card. Let him know that you're thinking about him. Any of us that have dealt with illness know that those cards mean a lot. And it's, and it's always nice to know that people are thinking about you.
Nice man. Thank you very much for that message. And we'll look forward to seeing Dr. Pennington after the October school board meeting, right here on Channel 19. For Dr. Pennington, I'm Phil Turney on the Board Wrap-Up Show. Dr. Pennington, I'm Phil Turney on the Board Wrap-Up Show.
I'm really excited to be able to present this to Audra tonight, mostly because she'll have to stand there and listen to what I say without telling me to be quiet. So, she's not a person who takes thank yous and praise very well, and so she's captive right now. Audra's one of the hardest-working people I know. Her job is counselor, test organizer, hall monitor, activity volunteer slash, I mean, I could go on and on, is so stressful and so demanding, but she works really hard to maintain a positive attitude and meet the challenges that her days bring. She has a deep, enthusiastic commitment to the students and to our faculty. As the student council advisor, I've called on Audra countless times for help chaperoning dances, or working the gate, or putting out the homecoming arch, or everything under the sun. And she's always so willing to chip in and help. She's eager to help, and she makes my job 1,000 times easier. She's a perfect person to represent our school and district. She deserves this reward and so much more. I think that, you know, that's, if you're very lucky in your professional life, you get to work with a person like Audra. And I know that she makes our school a better place, and I know that she makes a huge difference in the lives of our students, as well as in the lives of our faculty. So congratulations.
Well, when I was asked to go up to the high school, being in elementary for several years, I was very nervous about going up, but I've been very pleased in the staff and just the leadership and working with the students. It's just been a huge blessing. So, thank you.
This is probably not a surprise to anyone that's here today, if you've ever been around Billy. And of course, he's new to me, but I'm getting to know him more and more. This is a guy that just never tires, and he puts in the hours above and beyond. He's about 10 steps ahead of me. I never, I never get ahead of him, he's always ahead of me. Let me read what I wrote about him. In all my years and age, I've never been around anyone in support, staff that works as hard. Billy seems to never get tired. He is always willing to provide his services. It's a great privilege and honor, Billy, for you to receive this tonight. Thank you very much.